To approve zoning permits. Okay, the next item on the agenda is other business. And under other business, we have four conditional use permits. We're up for renewal, renewal. And we'll be down through them one at a time. Now, regarding these renewals, we will take comments on these renewals. But your comments will be limited to two minutes. And if you wish to make a comment, raise your hand and you will be recognized. You come to the front here, state your name, and make your comment. And I ask that you do not make a comment without being recognized. We will take notes from the points that you make. So if someone makes a point, please do not come up to make the same point. Because if the point's made, we got it. I also ask that your comments be specific to the renewal that's being discussed. And that there be absolutely no personal attacks. Okay, the first cup that's up for renewal is... Our next cup renewal, go ahead.
On behalf of Tracy Erickson, Ucatan Township. This mine was originally permitted in 1992 and has been renewed every five years since then. It was up for renewal January 1st, 2012. But it was put on hold because of silica sand proposal and the environmental review that had been requested at that time. It has been dropped as far as the silica sand part of it. And this is just a renewal of the original permit. There again, there are no violations on this mine. And Mr. Erickson is asking for an additional five-year renewal from January 1st, 2012.
Okay, at this time, is there any comment?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Comments coming first.
What's the question right now?
You want...
What did you say?
Let me ask you, you want...
Comments first.
You want to comment?
I want to comment.
You want to comment before?
Yes.
Okay.
I've been working with Rick and I'm wondering about the RGU. And I've been in contact with EQB, various emails. I have a couple of letters from EQB. And just in understanding their stuff with us, I do not believe we are the RGU. So we cannot, I don't think we can make a decision tonight on this. They are going to have a meeting on May 21st, the EQB, to resolve this issue. I just don't think we should go ahead and do this. We're not the RGU. And as part of, I'm the county board thing. And I don't want to do something that's not legally right.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the board?
I just have a lot of comments. There's a, from Jay Squires, Bob, May 14th, 2013. On the second page, about halfway down, he says, however, and I'm just quoting from this, however, the most recent CPU expired. So it doesn't seem like this is a renewal.
It's a renewal, yeah.
Why does Mr. Squires think that this has expired? All right, why would he say that?
He doesn't say that. I'm not sure what you mean. It's recorded. It's recorded with the deed. It's been renewed every five years. It was put on hold, as I said, because of environmental reviewing. That's all I can say. According to Jay Squires, Rick and I had a phone conference with him this morning. He said, the question with the EQB and who's the RGU is no reason not to open this up tonight and review it. This is why we're here. It's on our list of things to review tonight. No reason to not review it. And if there's a recommendation tonight that goes to the board, I would recommend that you base that recommendation on future federal and state approvals, just like we do any other permit, just like what was done on the last AT&amp;T recommendation here. There's no decision tonight. It's a recommendation of the county board. And so I suggest you go ahead and review it. That's why we're here.
Okay, at this point, is there anyone in the audience who wants to comment on this? Again, you're limited to two minutes. Go ahead, come up and introduce yourself.
My name is Subhan Gort. My husband Brian and I live in Ucatan Township. May, go ahead.
Go ahead.
What is really going on here? Are we in some type of altered reality where the rule of law and reason mean nothing? Which part of not being the responsible government unit do you not understand? If Erickson has been released by the EQB, show us the letter. Doesn't disregarding Judge Walters' ruling mean anything to this body? You had better rethink that because Judge Walters has rescheduled a hearing for June 23rd to clarify and enforce that ruling. The DNR has sent a letter saying silica sand mining within one mile of a trout stream means a setback permit for the DNR. Will you ignore that as well? We have a letter from your own land use attorney, Jay Squires, and Scanlon himself to Erickson saying the permit is expired. Is that to be dismissed as meaningless? How is a permit that expired a year and three months ago not expired? This non-transferable permit is expired. Erickson and Scanlon cannot argue simultaneously that the pending EIS and EAW prevented this permit from expiring, and this board can now take action on that permit. The same conditions that existed before the permit expiration in January 2013 exist today. Either the permit is expired, or you do not have authority to consider it today. You cannot argue two contradictory things at the same time. Erickson lost his exact case in court when Houston County was the defendant. The judge ruled he did not have the right to mine, even in a more limited sense that occurred since 1992. Erickson refused to respond or appeal, and so that judge dismissed this case with prejudice. And that means it can't even be brought up again. Erickson knew the ruling prohibited him from mining, or he would not have written an ex parte letter to the judge asking for the prohibition to be dismissed. The judge ignored his letter, and the ruling stands.
Anybody else wish to make comments on this renewal?
My name's Zach Glenn.
What's your name, sir?
Zach Glenn.
Okay.
At least the burnout hatchery from Scott Anderson. For the past year, I've been operating a burnout hatchery just across the highway from the coal mines. And there are three different areas that I'm concerned about with implications for my business that I started up over there. I hatch and raise rainbow trout from eggs and fry all the way up to adult stage food fish. And three main areas I'm concerned about are noise, air, and water. I brought a third-page research article on fish sensitivity to acoustic impacts. It's been widely researched on implications of loud noises to fish development from eggs all the way up to juveniles and adults. The other impact that I'm really concerned about is the air. The DNR estimates emissions from industrial sand at 1.4 pound of particulate matter per vehicle mile travel. And being only a couple hundred yards away, being safe to say that's not particulate matter, could end up in a hatchery. And that density is as low as five milligrams per liter, showing negative effects on rearing of trout for suspended solids in the water. And then the noise aspect of it, you know, a lot of trust runs by every day. Research, if anybody cares to look into it, is well documented on sensitivity to fish, not just stress, but as well as swim bladder ruptures and other physical damages, as well as behavioral.
When did you start this business?
One year ago.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question. I got a question. I want to verify. He's not asking for industrial sand permit. He's industrial, he's asking for commercial. And both of you referred to industrial, so I, I mean, I just want to verify that.
The DNR study was industrial.
No, it's not industrial.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, I just want to verify.
Any other comments?
I think, I know where Zach's hatchery is and prevailing winds, I think would blow a lot of air, whether it's industrial or construction sand, his way. And I think you exchange your air how many times?
On high, the fact is, three times per minute with the air inside and air outside. Whatever's outside doesn't get inside.
Do you filter your air at all? Do you live on a paved road, or? What about gravel, dust, and dirt flying around from fields? Is that any harm or not?
Hasn't been so far yet.
All right.
My name is Rosemary Iverson, and I own the property right next to the Erickson's. I brought a couple of things, so they have pictures and maps. Can I give those to you or help somebody see things? Can I, I don't have them for everybody.
You can share.
Can you share?
Share.
And then also, as long as I'm up here, can I say, my attorney, James Peters, said something, did people understand it came yesterday? Did you, I have copies of it, if anyone saw it. It was from, um, my attorney. And it's, I don't know. I don't know how many. Jesus, count to my two minutes.
Yeah.
If you look at the packages, those kind of show exactly what I'm talking about. I've owned property and asked for it with Erickson for, since 1999. And my main concerns are erosion, the proximity, loss of value to my property, and loss of privacy. The boundaries changed drastically in 2007 when he sold it. It was re-surveyed, and right now, I'm in the middle of it. It's a little cut out, you can see, and I'm on three sides. And when he originally applied for it, the boundaries were much further away. I mean, there was a reasonable buffer there that protected me. And if this is allowed to go without any conditions, he can go right 50 feet away from my property, and I'm sitting basically in the middle of it. He did deed me that piece of land in the middle of it. My land is sand. It's all sand. And yet just, and it's on a hill, and it just washes down. There's nothing I can do. You know, four-wheeling, that causes erosion. I've got to have people stop doing that, too. Nothing throws back if you drive on there everything. The sand is just there. And I'm concerned about what's going to be done if this mining is going to be going on.
Okay, and you bought the property in 1999?
Yes.
So when you drove up there to look at the property, did you see that mine sitting there?
Sure. There wasn't much air. It didn't bother me then.
Because?
Because there wasn't much going on, that's why. And it never really has bothered me. There's quite a buffer there. I'm saying that buffer's changed. It's gone almost. If he's allowed to mine up to, well, there's no conditions for it, the mining.
See, right now, there's a 50-foot setback from property line.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a 50, there's a 50, what's that?
I know.
Yeah, okay. It's a 50-foot setback, what's that?
Two minutes.
Okay, there is a 50-foot setback from property line.
Okay, well, you can also see that there's a road in there that was pretty, and these trees and that, those are violations of the CUP. Okay, in place. And so I'm just asking that, I'm concerned about the conditions that are on this. And I think that in order for you to renew this, you've got to add conditions or else you've got it.
Thank you. Any other, anybody else want to make comment about this?
I got a question. Rosemary, I got a question.
Rosemary, you come back in a second. We're going to exceed your two minutes because we're going to ask you questions.
Yeah. Since you're so close there, I want to ask you a question. Now, is there a residence on your property here?
There's, there's a picture there. There's two cabins.
Two cabins?
And a shed.
Okay. Now, do you realize, I believe the setback for a building is a thousand feet, isn't it?
Well, from a house.
From a house, okay.
For the record, those are two unpermitted cabins.
There are two unpermitted cabins, sorry.
Yeah, Steve Thorson put them on there.
Did you do a title search when you bought that property?
I had the plaque done. And I thought that was going to be adequate, especially since it was from the previous owner, too. And, I mean, Steve always told me because I had a relationship with him, and all that, this was where it was. So I didn't have the survey done.
And so you didn't discover that you actually were in this area until years later?
Um, well, no one did.
You bought it in 99, but when did you discover that your cabin was not?
Steve found it in, in 2007 when he decided to sell.
Okay, so then that's...
And that's when it was re-surveyed, and then, and so he deeded me this little cutout that was in it. So therefore, it's changed. I mean, I'm in the middle, but the original CUP was granted based upon old property lines. So it gets a lot of consideration.
So what setback would be, setback would be?
The one that was there before.
Which is how much?
I think it's on one of those drives, I think it was at...
Well, 50, it's always 50 feet, 50 feet from property line, so much from an approved residence.
When Thorson owned it, the mine would have overlapped your cabins, okay? That was part of the mine. Since he sold you that property, the new setback is actually 50 feet.
But the original CUP was granted 1992.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
And it opened.
And it wasn't changed. And that was based upon, I would assume, the boundaries that he gave you.
And that overlapped the property that you know?
No.
Yes.
No, the old boundaries are way out on, outside of me. There's a whole row of trees and stuff. You can't, I can't see the roads.
Right.
Okay, that was there, but now it's going to just, he's going to cut, he could cut it all down. There is going to be nothing.
Well, again, right now, there's a 50-foot setback from the property line. Now, your cabin is not right on that property line. You're, now, I mean, since you've got these additional acres, you're not right on that property line. You're right, you're up north or...
I'm in the middle of it. If you can't see, there's a picture. The picture shows it better. It's always got a picture.
There's multiple issues here. That's what you've got going here. You realize that?
And?
Well, the undocumented cabin presents a problem. The unapproved cabin.
Well, you know what? On the same day that he applied for the permit, he also applied for a permit for one of those buildings.
Who's that?
Steve Thorson. It's in the name records. Same name.
There are no permits. Okay. Now, I can look at that more in depth.
Well, I got it, too, and I can show it to you. But the thing is that the boundaries have changed.
As a result of the 2007 survey?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, we'll take that into consideration. Thank you. Any other questions for Rosemary while she's here? All right, go ahead, sir.
Oh, just to, so the cabins are actually built on the original mine site.
Right.
Sir, I just, I just raised my hand. I need to wait for Omar. I actually got a permit, error, not a permit, but I went through the process to find out how to build one of those cabins. And for those cabins to be legal, they have to be movable, right?
No. They require initial use permit.
Yeah.
That would come in front of this board.
Yeah. So there shouldn't be a problem just to move those cabins. Because they're supposed to be built and immovable.
If it's not permitted.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I'm Corey Baker, and I live adjacent to Tracy Erickson's daughter. I guess on what I've heard tonight, it's cabins. I just want to clarify to myself. If the cabins were built without a permit, then that would be the first violation of the mine. Outside of that, that is kind of, I don't know if I'm the only one that thinks that or how that works, rather than trying to make sense of what Rose said. I guess what, first of all, I'm concerned that the initial permit doesn't have the language to carry us any further than it has now, that it's been so for all sites, people that want to mine, and people that are concerned about it. And what it could potentially be if it's renewed again, because essentially, it's the same one that caused the roughness in the first one. I think the recommendation should either be, take the new landlord's desires and have them put on paper and make that the appetition for what he wants, rather than try to force or fit the old permit into what it really can't be. And that's the struggle, what I even think, is it doesn't fit the criteria for today's mining. It's just a small pit. I realize that, I lived next to it. But it could obviously get huge without any restrictions. And that's what most people fear.
Thank you.
I can't...
For the record, what was that for a minute?
I got to look into it, all right? We're here to discuss Erickson. I'm just curious.
Kelly Stanich, Houston Township. I do currently serve on Joint Agency Rulemaking Advisory Panel. Excuse me. And the agencies involved are the EQB, the DNR, and the MPCA. Just last month, I did receive four hours of instruction on Minnesota environmental review rules. And I can tell you, having studied it quite a bit, that it would be a violation of Minnesota law for this body, or any county body, to take action on this permit. Mr. Scanlon did mention, although he sugarcoated it somewhat by calling it...
Kelly, Kelly, just stick to the facts, Kelly. Now, tell us exactly...
I'm telling you facts.
Okay, now, tell us exactly how it'd be a violation.
Because there is a rule prohibiting governmental action. It's rule number...
Four?
4410-3100.
Now, what does it say?
I'd suggest you read it.
I got it.
Okay, read it.
Minnesota Rule 44110-0.3100 prohibits, prohibits prohibition on final government decisions. Reads, if, Subpart 1 prohibits, if any AEW or EIS is required for governmental action under parts 4410...
Okay, is this a reference into the AEW you're talking about, the EIS?
Um, there are actually, what I was trying to tell you when I was interrupting, was that there had been two environmental review orders. They were not requests. They were orders. One was ordered by Houston County for an EAW on the site. The second one was ordered by the EQB, and that is an EIS. The EIS stands for Environmental Impact Statement, and that is a much more in-depth study. And you are prohibited, as a government body, from taking any action until those two environmental reviews are fulfilled. And it is up to the, to the responsible government unit, which is the EQB in the case of the EIS, to make the determination as to when those requirements have been fulfilled for the EIS. After that, you would have the county that would need to make a determination as to when, whether the requirements have been fulfilled for the EAW. They weren't requests, they were orders. There are two on order, it's illegal, as per Minnesota law, to take any action.
Okay, you made your point, Kelly.
Can I finish the last thing?
I know, I think we have, everybody has a copy of that, if that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Mr. Johnson.
Eric Johnson of Houston Township. What Kelly was just talking about was when this mine was requesting to do frac sand mining. From what I understand, this is for construction sand permit. Is that right? So what I'm wondering is why is this being treated differently? This is for construction sand only. He is no longer, from what I've been paying attention to what's going on, he's affiliated, affiliated with Minnesota sands or anything with frac sand. This is just plain old construction sand. So those orders does not matter anymore for this construction sand permit. That case has been done. It's been settled in court, it's done. So I guess I'm just trying to figure out why, all of a sudden, Dana, you said that you were, didn't have a problem with construction sand mining, now all of a sudden you do.
I don't.
Because this is what this permit is for.
I want to do it right. I want us to be the RGU.
You want us to be the RGU.
I want Houston County to be the RGU, so we can go ahead and take care of this.
Right. But you just said that, you just said that before, that this wasn't the RGU.
We're not the RGU. We have been released from the EQB until May, when they have an update.
This is just the recommendation to the county board, correct?
Yeah.
So you would be the RGU.
Uh, yeah, we're, and we're going to vote on it, and, and believe me, the rest of the commissioners will know what, who's the RGU. We will not be the RGU.
So, but this is for construction sand, you understand that? And there's, you've got, you've got conditions on this permit, correct?
If it's for construction sand, how come we have the same survey stuff from silica sand?
Probably because it's the same, it's the same place, it's the same mine. It's the same mine. It's the same everything.
Okay, we, you think, we got your point.
I'm, I'm...
All right, we got, we got the point.
Good evening. My name is David Williams. I live in Fillmore County. Yesterday...
Yesterday, as late as yesterday, Minnesota EQB informs Houston County by letter that, that EIS is pending, environmental review is pending, and that Houston County has no legal authority to approve any kind of permit for the Erickson property. And this fiction that people are talking about, that this is construction sand versus something else, this is silica sand. I don't care if the silica sand is used to make granola or ice cream. It is silica sand that is mined. Whether it is sold for frac sand or sold for construction, it is still the same mining activity that is going on. So let's not, let's not fictionalize what you're permitting. You are permitting silica sand. You are permitting silica sand mining. What Erickson uses it for is up to him. And that's a part of the problem in your permitting. But at this point, you don't have any legal authority to issue to him a permit. And in fact, if I'm correct, Mr. Scanlon probably spoke with Will Soweford, the executive director of the EIS, of the EQB today. And was told that, was in fact told that. But certainly here it is in writing that you do not have the authority, the legal authority, to permit that mine. Not yet. Not until Erickson is released from that mine. And that may not come until May the 21st. The other interesting thing is people are talking about the disconnection, the disassociation between Minnesota sands and Erickson. Also in writing is a letter from the EQB to Rick Frick asking Frick, has there been any disconnection between Erickson and Minnesota sands? Rick Frick has refused to respond-
See, David, I can address that to some of those-
Rick Frick has refused to respond, and, and the EQB had to write a second letter in order to get some response back.
David, it's possible those letters were set up and the person they sent to left the unit. I'm not sure about that, but your point is taken. Your point is taken.
If you want the letters-
Two minutes are up.
No, we got the letters. You've got these letters.
Two minutes are up. David, we got your point.
Thank you. Oh, I do have a question. The question is, it's a clarification. My question is, are you, are you recommending to the, to full board, to the full county board tonight, or are you trying to take a final decision?
We have not decided. Your point is made.
Thank you. Would you clarify that later?
We will before the meeting's over. Okay. Alright, anyone else want to make a comment on this, Franklin?
Franklin, Franklin, I'm Yucatan Township. I have a question. When you, as a board, allow a permit or renew a sand permit in the past, do you discuss if it's sand or if it's silica sand? That's a question for the board. I like to ask Bob that. And when you re, I understand you renewed one last year, and there were no questions asked. It was a sand mine. Is, is there a difference here because this one's silica sand, and that's the only one in the county that has silica sand in their sand pit? I guess that's a question I'm asking.
I, I think down the road, Franklin, it's probably going to be volume related, not- Because you can't differentiate between the two. You have to look for its volume.
Well, I just understood here that it's the only one that was silica sand.
I mean, there are definitely different uses. And we have a long history of construction sand and agricultural sand, and we want to protect that here in Kellin. And we don't want to complete it with frac sand.
As far as the gentleman that was worried about the dust from his drought, you'll get more dust from the gravel road. Believe me, I live along the gravel road. You got dust 24/7 unless it rains like today. So that little bit of dust that he's getting from the sand won't affect his fish as much as the gravel road. And if that's all I got to say, I wanted to know if the difference on the silica sand.
Okay, is your question answered?
I missed pretty much-
As far as I know, we never asked that question. I mean, we never took that consideration from a sand pit. Was it sandless? I think the rest of the board will agree with it.
So let me ask you another question. I have a last one. Two minutes are up. Are the, did you, when you renew other permits in the past, sand permits for another five years, have you questioned, I mean, have you questioned him about the difference in the sand?
Where it's going? No. Frank, Frank, thank you. Okay.
Donna Burtby, Yucatan Township. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but I just want to respond to this last comment. I live on a dirt road, probably 50 feet off a dirt road. And I know the kind of dust that is kicked out by traffic going on that dirt road. And it is laughable to think that if someone had put a sand mine across the road from me, that that dirt road would be kicking up just the same amount of dust and sand. So that's, that's just ridiculous. That sand mine is going to be huge if this is allowed. It's not going to be like a dirt road. I guarantee you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm probably going to have a bunch of questions for you guys. I'm Trey Erickson. I'm the owner of this property. I live in Yucatan Township. There's been a bunch of misinterpretations here tonight, as there's been for many, many months. I want to first make a note that the county board unanimously made a decision to take away any of the past court orders, because it was a temporary order. And a temporary order, according to legal documents, the only way that a temporary order is by the most current order. The most current order, on my mind, has been dismissed. So that is no longer in play. They can change and play words all day long, as far as, as far as the court order goes. And Dana, you walked my property. Other people did, and I thank you for that. There's no screening that's been removed from my property. You guys saw it. I have, I have conditions on this permit. Ten thousand yards is what you're saying. I don't know where you're going to come up with this huge traffic. My permit was put in place in 1992. Well before then, these neighbors and things like that are now making an issue. It's a known fact that this is construction sand. Let's not lose focus, guys and gals. This is 10,000 yards. Been there for 22 years. We're going to make problems today. And you've heard Mr. Scanlon state, there's been no problems on my mine. There's been unfounded claims in the last couple of years, because that's what happens to stir the pot. And we all know the more you stir it, the more it stinks. And that's what's going on. The county board has the ultimate authority to make this. As it was read from the county commissioners earlier, a couple of weeks back, they made a motion. With that, they took their advice from their legal attorney, Mr. Squires. Go forward with this as a construction mine renewal. Let's not lose focus. That's what it is. It's been there 22 years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tracy.
Michelle Erickson, Yucatan Township. In the last two years, we have had lies, rumors, and false accusations slung at us and thrown at the county regarding our sand mine. Whether these have been malicious or out of ignorance of the true facts, you decide. We have chosen not to go to the paper or make public statements about these slanderous lies, believing that in doing what is right and abiding by the laws set forth, that the truth would speak for itself. We are not seeking to allow industrial mining on our property. Renewing and returning our rightful ability to mine construction sand like the 150-plus other mines in Houston County should have been a simple process. But for some reason, a group of people has decided that they no longer want us to have our construction permit. They have decided they would like to take away a portion of our livelihood for whatever vengeful reasons that they have, and they would like you to do that for them. We are putting our trust in Houston County to abide by the laws set in place. We are trusting that the ongoing bully tactics and false claims of a vengeful group will not dissuade you from doing what is right in the eyes of the law. Our mine has never had a single violation in the 20-plus years that it's been running. There has never been a single complaint or accusation that has not been proven false, though lately many false accusations have been thrown at it. No matter how much mud has been slung upon, the truth is still black and white when you peel away the mud. We are trusting you to make this right. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else want to speak to this issue?
I guess I'll leave it to you.
Yeah, go ahead.
My name is Dave Greack. I live in Yucatan Township.
What's your last name, Dave?
Greack.
Okay.
I just, hearing that thing about the trout farm, if you take that into consideration, he's been there a year, and the mine's been there many years. But he should have known, when he started this thing, that maybe it could be a problem. He should think about that or have it somewhere else. And from what I understand, he has not had a permit from the township for this thing.
Any other wanted to ask this issue? Go ahead, sir.
My name is Larry Dowsted. I have lived in Yucatan Township 62 years. I'm speaking for myself. I'm a farmer. When you talk about dust, there's nothing worse than road dust. I live, my house is probably 100 feet off the road. They talk about this mining dust and this trout stream hatchery, which I have never seen, as Dave mentioned. I have not seen the permit come across before the town board yet. I've been in the town board, start my 11th year. I've not seen a permit come across to get renewed or to get issued for this trout hatchery. I'd like to know why.
Okay, let's just stick to the mine.
Yes. For this mine, I see no problem with it at all. We are dipping into something here that's been brought out of sorts by a group of people. I'm not going to name any names. I think that you people on the board have enough common sense to review this and use your common sense. This thing has been in effect since 1992. It's commercial sand. It's not silica sand, frac sand. I hope that you take into consideration to use that description of this property and not to violate, take him under violation of anything he has not done at this time. I think he's trying to do his best under the rules. He's worked with Bob wonderfully, you know, trying to take everything under control, work under rules step by step. And I hope he continues to do that, and I hope you guys take into consideration. And I hope you let this hold before the county board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else want to speak to this issue? Alright, at this point then, we're going to cut off public comment. And we're just going to have discussion on the board. Open it up. Discussion. Any questions about, you want to talk about this RGU thing? You want to talk about, we understand that this is construction land. We got that part. But, go ahead. Whatever you guys want to talk about.
One of the things that's made this a little confusing is it went from the construction sand that it was, then when the silica sands got involved, and then it was going to be silica sand, and now we're going bad, to being permitted for construction sand. So I don't think that people are making, when they say it's silica sand, I mean, it's changed quite a few times. It's been made kind of more confusing than it needed to be.
Yeah, it has, it has been confused during, but I think we can straighten that out. I'm not sure we can straighten that out tonight, but we can look at that. But anyway, any other?
I think we need to review a few more things with this. If there's anyone on the board that would want to go down and take, actually, take a look at this mine, Dr. Dan, it might be a thing to do. Dan and I, and Dan actually did drive down there one day. And I think the rest of you guys want to do that sometime, but I think we'll take a little bit of time and get all the facts all put together and then address it in the future. So I probably will ask the team, if we, if we- Or more discussion?
Now, our next meeting is the 22nd of May. That would be one day after the EQB rules on this RUG thing. I mean-
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, which, which, if we, if we delay it, we definitely would be taking it up on the 22nd.
I think that we should do, get all the facts, we're going to get by in season.
I understand, we understand the frustrations and contention on both sides. We really do. And we're not, we're diving in here for the facts, so don't lose patience here. We're going, we're going to try to search for the facts. No, comment period's over here. We're, I'm just, I'm just making a general comment, but any other, Charlie?
Okay, there's been a question about the making, the schedule within 60 days, and when is the end of the 60 days, Bob?
Well, it ended Monday, and we extended that for an additional 60 days, which would be June 26th.
Okay. You know, Mr. Erickson, I think he's been sitting in the limbo for a number of time with this mine. And I don't know, you know, he has some rights too. And if he has opportunity to sell some construction sand to a building site, I mean, we've got to respect that issue too, I think. And the question on who the governing authority to make this decision, I read the letter from the EQB, the executive director, and it's a typical answer from a bureaucrat that didn't tell you anything. The way I read it. It is. That's the way I looked at it. I read it over three, four times. I couldn't find the answer. There was no answer.
I think we have some conflicting legal opinions here too that need to be resolved. And the temporary order denied motion for a temporary injunction on the second page. Third Judicial District Board. It says filed November 27th, 2012. But on-
That's over two years.
Well, on the second page, it says, of course, the enforcement of the moratorium also means that there will not be the more limited mining and extraction which have gone on at various times. So how do you interpret that? I think that, I think even Rick referenced that.
Was that in the package?
No.
It's a 2012 document. I haven't seen that.
I haven't seen it.
I think it was to me.
Where'd you get it, Rich?
I think it was mailed to me. But-
Now it was back in. So it wasn't in the package, but it was referenced.
If you think that is confused, you can think it from not to be.
That's not real where it comes from. Part of the job we have here, this is a difficult deal. There's a lot of contention, a lot of confusion, a lot of concern here, and we get that. And our job here is to try to sort through all information and come down with the correct recommendation. And if we did table this for three weeks and study it, we could look into these things and come up with, I'm open to be the one.
I have a question. Rick, Rick is, and Bob, and maybe Rick can explain it. But you, you had the conversation with attorney J. Squires. And his recommend, could you explain what his recommendation that the county should go ahead one way or the other with this? Could you explain it or?
Well, just what he's saying is that the permit issued in '92, yes, was for commercial sand. There was a limit on this, on the amount of material to go out of there. That's- That was a lot of what we hung our hat on as far as the court case when the county had placed stop work orders on Minnesota sands from proceeding because the threshold was going from that 10,000 up to 2 million, and which would far exceed what the permit was issued for. In the meantime, the court case, as you've heard there, has been, is dismissed with prejudice, which means it can't, whatever arguments that came before that at that time can't be used again against, to be argued. What happened after that was Tracy came back and he applied again for this extension, which I might add, Bob, instead of the January 12, it should have been January 1st of 13.
Oh, I missed the beat.
Yeah, you said 12 there. I want just for the minutes to clarify that. It should be the January 13. That his renewal date would have came up. As we were going through the AEW and EIS, yes, there was a, we got a letter from the EQB that they were the regulatory governmental unit. There was supposed to be, when the EIS came through, the EQB asked Minnesota sands, there was supposed to be a financial obligation done to do the EIS. That has not ever been addressed, and it's still sitting there to this day. I don't know if there's any conversation. It don't look like there's much conversation with that being taking place. My question has been along to the EQB is how long can we let this go? I mean, sooner or later, we've got to make a decision on this. In the meantime, Tracy has made an application back. He wants his commercial old permit back from '92, which there's restrictions on it of the, on the conditional use order plus the 10, and he's agreed to the 10,000 yards. So looking at all of that and seeing that the, and the board made the decision back two weeks ago that when we had a conference call with Jay, then the board made the decision to direct the staff to proceed with the application that we were to address the 60-day issue, which Bob did write to Tracy that we needed the extra 60 days, that the application no longer did apply to the AEW or the EIS that's on the table. And that they directed the staff also to notify the area landowners and the EQB that we were going forward with the application. And staff has then fulfilled all those obligations. That's why we're here now.
Okay, then, did Mr. Squires indicate that you, we, the county has the authority to make, to do this now?
Yes.
Okay.
That's our handle.
That was his opinion.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'd like to make one, a couple points. Tracy has said he's taken himself away from Minnesota sands. But unfortunately for Tracy, Minnesota sands has not removed themselves from him. That's what the EQB is like. They've asked the documentation twice, and they have to get the documentation they need. So the problem is not with that. Tracy should not be upset with us. It's the Minnesota sands he should be upset with, that who has not released him yet.
Dana, that was sent April 12.
Why is it the people from the MPCA telling this? I got letters all last couple of days.
The documentation is there.
Okay. Well, they're going to, so then on May 21st, they're going to look that over. If that's there, what you say is right. And then they'll say, I'm not, and then someone else also said, I'm against construction sand. I'm not, we already had one here tonight, and the unanimous vote. I think I'm in on the unanimous. So I really, I'm not against construction sand. I just want to do it right legally. The RUG thing's up.
I think the county got their legal opinion, and I didn't get no legal, I couldn't, like I said, I couldn't make no determination from the letter that we got from the EQB, you know, the environmental board. I didn't, I couldn't get, but the attorney for the county evidently realizes that we have the authority to do it now.
You think, you think a lawyer trumps the MPCA?
Well, how do, why do you hire Mr. Squires then?
Do you have any advice? Advice, not recommendations.
Okay, no comments.
Advice, not recommendations, Mr. Weaver?
Alright, alright. Go ahead, Ben.
This thing is very complex. And I want to just stay patient with us, and we'll get this thing sorted through, and we will get it done right. Trust us.
Care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we table this thing for now and do our additional research on this thing. If somebody wants to go down and take a look at this, and with Tracy's permission, that's up to Tracy.
Okay, are you making the recommendation because you don't know who the governing authority is? Or because you want to study?
No, I want more information. I want to study.
Because I didn't know who the governing authority is.
I want to study a little more, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second to it?
I'll second the motion.
We had a motion made and seconded that this renewal gets tabled until our next meeting, which is May 22. That's when they will redress this issue. And in the meantime, we need to dig into all these details the best of our ability and get an answer and make a decision. We have a motion. We have a second. Is unanimous vote? Any other, any other discussion? All those in favor, signal five, they say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side, aye.
Mr. Chair? There was a discussion about going down. Anybody wanted to review it? And I guess if Tracy's willing to allow anybody to take a look at the mine?
Can I, can I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Like I told you guys when you came out, that's no problem. The frustration is you've had 60 days. Now you're 62 days. You still need more time.
There won't be 62 days.
You're already at 62 days.
We are now, right. This is the first time it's come up.
Only three of you took an opportunity. That's my problem. I've been quiet through this whole thing.
You have. Yep, you have. Point taken. Alright, but there's probably going to want to be, maybe, I'm not sure. Some work can be done to see, is that okay?
Yeah, just give me a call, and I'll meet you out there. I'm not going to allow just anybody.
Yeah.